Kalender, Davy Williams. Danke fürs Kommen. Wir danken euch fürs Kommen. Danke allen. Ihr könnt euch hier nicht aus dem Haus ausziehen. Ich will es wiederholen. Wir werden heute nicht live Fragen auf der Tribüne stellen. In einem Versuch, die Dinge zu kontrollieren und die Zeit zu unter Kontrolle zu halten, werden wir nur Redefragen stellen. Ihr solltet alle Ihre Sitzkarten an den Plätzen legen. Wenn ihr eine Frage habt, hält es hoch. Anne, Carrie, ich und jemand kommt herbei und bekommt das von euch. Wir bringen es zur Tische des Ausschusses zurück. Dann bringe ich es mir nachher. Fragen über das, wie das funktioniert? Okay. Also, um euch zwei Kandidaten zu wissen: Wir haben drei Minuten für die Anmerkung. Wir werden zwei Minuten für Fragen beantworten. Für euch alle. Und ein Minute für die Beantwortung. Die Stelle wird klein sein. Ihr holt eine 15 Sekunde Warnung hoch. Dann holt es ab und kommt zurück. Ihr könnt von da oben sprechen. Ihr wollt eine Stelle, ihr könnt tun, was ihr gefühl habt. Unseren Leuten werden wir jetzt nicht mehr mitmachen. Wir werden also gegenseitig passieren. Aber wir werden schnell gehen. Okay. Sind alle bereit, zu starten? Sind die in den Backen? Sind wir bereit, weiterzugehen? Pracht und Gebet? Mick, möchtest du etwas zum Gebet sagen?
Wir danken uns vor Gott und allen Wesen. Vater, wir wissen, dass du alles weißt. Das erste, was wir immer tun wollen, ist unsere Haltung in deiner Präsenz. Herr, wir sind heute hier, um Dinge für unser Land, unsere Gemeinde, unsere Gemeinden zu machen. Herr, wir danken dir und preisen dich. Du musst einfach weiterhin Wissen und Verständnis geben. Herr, als wir diesen Forum heute durchführen, Herr Gott, gib uns Wissen. Die Fragen, die jetzt aufgetreten werden, Herr, du würdest einfach diejenigen freuen, die beantworten werden. Mit Wissen, Ehrlichkeit, Transparenz. So, Herr, wir werden wirklich wissen, Herr Gott, was du für unser Haus, unser Hausamt, in diesem Zeitraum willst. Wir preisen dich. Herr, beide sind bereit, sich zu stellen. So, Herr, wir bitten, dass deine Gnade und Segen heute hier wären. Herr, es würde eine große Einigkeit geben, Herr Gott, um die Party, Vater, als wir versuchen, zu tun, was es am besten für unser Land ist. Wir bitten in Jesus Namen. Bitte, Pledge of Allegiance.
Ich pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wir werden zwei Minuten nehmen. Wir werden die Plätze für die Leute im Backen nehmen. Dann starten wir, okay? Ich möchte einen anderen Kandidat bitten. Ihr könnt direkt eine Frage zu einem Kandidaten oder einem anderen stellen. Oder ihr könnt beide Kandidaten stellen. Wenn ihr das verstanden habt, nehmt ihr eure Sitzkarten hoch. Das war gut gemacht, Davy. Ihr seid fertig. Das war gut gemacht. Kalender. Sie werden nach Goshen County laufen. Valerie, bitte, bitte hochkommen. Wir beginnen unsere Anmerkungen. Ich hoffe, ihr habt alle Gelegenheit. Es ist unglaublich, toll und toll, dass wir heute so eine gesamte Haus haben. Danke euch allen fürs Kommen. Wir kommen jetzt zum Wort für Wort.
Als erstes möchte ich euch allen fürs Kommen bedanken. Es ist wichtig für euch alle, hier zu sein, um zu hören, was wir sagen, damit ihr besser Entscheidungen treffen könnt. Danke fürs Kommen. Ich möchte euch sagen, wenn ihr meine Freude habt, ihr wisst, was ich heute darüber zu sprechen habe. Ich bin ein Mensch, der Gott liebt. Also bin ich hier, um mich zu retten. Ich bin auch pro Leben. All Leben ist wertvoll, von Anfang bis zur natürlichen Tod. Ich bin traditioneller Familie. Ich habe einige Gelder bekommen, die ich nicht mehr habe. Aber ich stehe bei dem. Ich glaube, die beste Erziehung für Kinder ist auf meiner Hand. Dann die Rechtsordnung. Ich glaube, die Rechtsordnung sollte die Grundlage für alle Gesetze sein. Privatwohnrecht. Leben, Freiheit und Hoffnung sind auf persönlicher Recht gebunden. Sie müssen geschützt werden. Und letztendlich glaube ich, dass wir die Rechte haben, um zu beherrschen. Ohne die Rechte der Zweiten Amtsordnung wird die Paradies regnen. Und heute ein bisschen über mich. Ich meine, viele wissen es. Aber mein Vater hat es früher getan, aber jetzt nicht mehr. 1920. Mein Vater, als mein Vater umgegangen ist, mein Vater hat mir das Haus auf dem Kinn Ranch 73 gekauft. Er hat mir das Haus hier in Western County gekauft. Wir sind dort gewohnt. Ich leite beide Rente bis jetzt. 1988, mein Vater umgegangen ist. 1993, meine Mutter und ich haben entschieden, dass ich die Mehrheit des Hauses von ihr und dem Kinn Ranch kaufen werde. Ich habe das so bis heute getan. Und fortunately, wie es funktioniert, in etwa 2004 konnte ich endlich alle Landkredite zahlen. Und seitdem wollte ich täglich sehen, wo ich Geld spenden kann, um das Leben zu erhalten. Und dann geht es weiter. Also ist das, wo wir sind. Ich habe meine schöne weiße Mutter hier, die heute hier ist. Und ich habe neun Kinder, die wir ernährt haben. Ich bin sehr froh, was wir haben. Sie sind alle groß. Sie sind gute Arbeiter. Und so danke ich ihnen. Ich glaube wirklich, dass wir eine limitierte Regierung haben müssen. Wir brauchen eine kleine Regierung, die mehr Verantwortung über die Menschen hat.
Davy, können Sie sich stellen? Die Leute im Backen können es euch nicht sehen. Wir bitten, dass Sie sich stellen. Bitte. Sie können sich stellen. Sie wollen nur sehen.
Ich weiß.
Das ist richtig.
Lassen Sie es. Danke. Bevor ich beginne, ich weiß, dass es einige hier sind. Es gibt ein Paar Papier auf dem Tisch, das ich wohl sortieren werde. Also, für eure Information, ich werde hier nach der armen Stopp um 8 Uhr sein. Ist das richtig, Chairman Rose? Ich werde hier nach der armen Stopp um 8 Uhr sein. Ich habe mit dem vorne gesprochen. Sie haben gesagt, es wird gut. Ist das gut für euch und Allen? Ich glaube an den wirtschaftlichen Wachstum in Wyoming. Eine starke Industrie und gute Arbeit, die auf Kohle, Öl, Gas, Trümmern, Landwirtschaft, Tourismus basiert. Ich unterstütze Wyoming-Werte. Das sind pro Leben, pro Leben. Ich stand neben unseren lokalen Elektronischen Officiellen. Gesetzliche Behandlung, unsere ersten Responder, unsere Lehrer, unsere Staatsschaffenden. Ich unterstütze respektive Landwirtschaft. Privatwohnrecht und das Recht des Staates, unsere eigenen Ressourcen zu managen. Ich pushiere gegen Regierungsüberfluss, gegen Gewalt. Und schlechte wirtschaftliche Politik, die wir gerade von der federalen Regierung entziehen, die Inflation schafft. Ich bin stolz darauf, stark auf die Schlüsselthemen zu handeln, die uns alle beeinflussen. Zum Beispiel Schule, Rechte für Jugendliche. Ich unterstütze Lösungen für Medizinische Gesellschaften. Regierungsüberfluss und Effizienz beeinflussen jeden Tag. Inflation, hohe Energiekosten, hohe Lebenskosten. Attacke auf unsere Hauptindustrien in Wyoming. Illegale Inmigranz. Das sind alle Charakteristika unserer aktuellen federalen Regierung. Wir sind Amerikaner, die auf Herausforderungen wie diese steigen. Wyoming-Männer haben eine starke Tradition, dass sie gute Nachbarn haben. Wir stehen zusammen. Wenn wir überleben wollen, müssen wir weiterhin zusammenhalten. Die Dividende, die wir in unserem Land sehen, bringt nicht unsere Lebensdauer weiter. Wir können nicht weiter aneinander attacken, über die Frage des Tages, und ignorieren die Konsequenzen solcher kürzlich gegebenen Verhaltens. Auch ein Staat wie Wyoming, das ist vor allem Republikanisch, wir können in den Trappengang fallen, wo wir uns aneinander tragen. Es ist unklar, dass wir unsere Frustration gegen die federalen Regierungen durch einattacken.
Okay, wir haben eine Frage. Fühlt sich deine Mitglieder als Staatssprecher oder Politiker? Warum fühlen sie das? Erklären Sie uns, welche spezifische Aktionen und Aktionen Sie sehen, die Ihnen beitragen, die Ihre Mitglieder zu unterstützen?
Ich würde hoffen, dass meine Mitglieder mich als Staatssprecher sehen. Ich habe gemerkt, dass ich von mir in diesem Büro stehe. Und ich suche keine Lösungen, die meine Tasche brechen. Also, ich vertraue wirklich, dass die Leute das sehen. Und ich sehe zu viele Politiker, die in den Büro kommen. Seine ganze Ziel ist, sich zu verdienen. Und wir haben einige in unserem Land, die wir alle haben. Und das ist es, worauf ich mich stelle. Danke. Was ist das alte Sagen? Maggie Jefferson sagte, Politiker schauen auf die nächste Wahl. Und Staatssprecher schaut auf die nächste Generation. Und ich denke, das gilt für uns beide hier. Wir sind hier für die richtige Gründe. Und ich glaube, ein defektiver Staatssprecher ist gefährdet. Und es ist eine Sache, zu wählen. Es ist eine andere Sache, Ergebnisse zu erzielen. Und so, in diesem Sinne habe ich gedacht, dass meine Leben beweist, dass Werte Werte sind. Und wenn ich die Unterstützung der Legislaturperiode brauche, während ich für Western County oder Hausamt 2 kämpfe, muss ich die Tür zu mir geöffnet werden. Und wenn ich in Cheyenne, in Cheyenne, die Tür geschlossen hätte, und in den Headlines, ist es schwierig, ihre Unterstützung zu fragen. Das gilt für alle Bereiche. Und ich glaube, das gilt für den Regierungspräsidenten auch. Ob wir ihm stimmen oder nicht. Wenn er will, dass er defekt ist, dann muss er sich selbst als Staatssprecher sehen.
Ihr habt in einer Zeit gesagt, dass ihr einen Ihrer Gegner gewählt habt, wo ihr anders hätten gewählt und warum. Wir beginnen mit Davy.
Nur eines? Dies ist mein Favorit. Der erste, der mir auf den Kopf kommt, ist ein Vorschlag aus 2002. Und das war Haus Bill 0007. Und das war jüngere Ehe. Und das Gesetz war, um die Alter von Ehe von 16 bis 18 zu erhöhen. Ich glaube, die Motivation dahinter war, um humanverbreitung zu bekämpfen. Wenn ein 60-jähriger Mann in die Büro kommt und eine Eheleistung fordert, mit einer jungen Frau mit ihm. Und ich glaube, ich hätte für das Gesetz gewählt. Ich erinnere nicht an den Bilddruck. Das Gesetz, das ich benutze, war ein Gesetz, das um 30 Jahre lang auf Verbrauchseinsatzes ging. Und wenn man seine Lande in Verbrauchseinsatz einspürt, dauert es drei Jahre, bis sie besucht werden. Und ich fand, dass diese Idee, Lande in Verbrauchseinsatz für Vertriebsqualität einzusetzen, ist Land aus dem Kontrolle der privaten Einzelnen zu rauslassen, weil es immer Regierungsagenturen gibt, die es kontrollieren. Und unfortunately, wie wir in den letzten vier Jahren gesehen haben, unsere aktuelle federalen Regierung hat die Regulierungen auf Verbrauchseinsatzen verändert. Und wenn sie das machen, können sie wie Sie es nutzen. Ich kann sehen, dass unsere Regierung, unsere Agenturen, dieses Land, es sagt, okay, Kabel produzieren, wir wollen keine Kabel mehr auf diesen Landen sehen. Also ist illegal, Kabel auf Verbrauchseinsatz zu verwenden. Also wäre das ein Gesetz, mit dem ich gewählt hätte. Weil ich denke, wir müssen es betrachten. Es ist gut für mich, wenn ich meine Lande in Verbrauchseinsatz einspürt. Aber in drei Jahren, ich denke, es ist nur fair, dass meine Familie oder jemand anderes, der über meine Lande steht, das Wahlrecht hat, zu betrachten. Wenn sie wollen, weiterhin in Verbrauchseinsatz einspüren, oder wenn sie wollen, das Land zu rauslassen und das Land für ein anderer Entwicklung verwenden, die sie denken, die das Staat und das Land als ein Gesetz profitieren. Ich denke, das ist wichtig. Danke.
Nächste Frage für beide Kandidaten. Welche politischen PAC-Stimmen wollt ihr für diese Kampagne suchen? Und was specifically wollten sie in Bezug auf ihre Jahre für diese Kampagne bieten? Welche politischen PAC-Stimmen wollt ihr für diese Kampagne suchen? Und was specifically wollten sie in Bezug auf ihre Jahre für diese Kampagne bieten?
Ich habe keine PAC-Stimme. Aber die Freedom PAC hat sich dafür entschieden. Aber ich habe nicht offensichtlich ausgesprochen gesucht, eine PAC-Stimme. Es war eine, die sie haben. Also, ich glaube, das ist es, worauf ich mich stelle. Danke. Ich erinnere nicht an eine PAC-Stimme. Es gibt viele PACs, die auf uns unterstützen. Wyoming Mining Association hat eine PAC. Ich unterstütze die Wyoming Mining Association. Die Association of General Contractors in Wyoming hat eine PAC. Und ich unterstütze die Association of General Contractors. Petroleum Association, ich unterstütze sie. More Stockgrowers, mehr, was ich nicht erinnere. Der, den ihr seht, Mailerstone, ist Americans for Prosperity. Und das ist eines der 40 Studien, die ich ausfüllen musste. Das ist eines dieser Studien. Und sie haben mich unterstützt. Und sie sind sehr zu der Freedom PAC. Sehr aggressiv politisch. Und niemand ist glücklich, wenn es sich scheint, dass niemand von diesen Mailern kommt. Neubau. Ich denke, das ist alles, was ich sage.
Representative Jim Nyman ist seit zwei Jahren an der Reihe. Er hat unverzichtbare Unterstützung vom County. Und er ist der aktuelle Majority-Floer-Leader. Representative Nyman's nächsten logischer Schritt ist Speaker of the House. Und der Melina scheint mit ihm zu sein. Da Sie nie sagen wollen, ein Hals zu reisen, würden Sie für und unterstützten Representative Jim Nyman als Speaker of the House? Warum?
Well, er hat es dir gemacht. Also, mein Nachbar auf der Reihe, ich habe ihn zwischen Representative Jim und Representative Albert, wenn ich auf den Gras ging. Und so, es ist ein bisschen in den Augen. Und gratulieren Sie auf den Nachbarn. Wie weit ein "Vorschlag für Speaker" ist, das war die Frage, richtig? Es würde allmählich von der Alternative abhängen. Wer sonst? Was ist die andere Option? Ich weiß nicht, wer das auf ihrem Kopf oder auf ihrem Kopf hat. Aber einige von euch haben von Jim gesagt, das war nicht wahr. Das hat seinen Namen gespielt. Und aus diesem Grund würde ich wahrscheinlich den anderen Kandidaten ziemlich hart bleiben. Jeder, wer es ist. Und vielleicht ist es weniger der beiden. Wenn Jim für Speaker of the House wird, würde ich ihm sicherlich einen Vorschlag geben. Ich meine, Jim ist der neue. Er ist ein consistent, gerechtiger Mensch als Majority-Floer-Leader. Und er gibt Bilddruck von Menschen auf beiden Seiten. Und er ist sehr fair darüber. Und ich denke, er wäre ein gerechter Mensch als Speaker of the House. Ich würde ihn gerne empfehlen. Und er ist sehr gut mitgearbeitet. Der Speaker of the Year. Also, das ist wo mein Vorschlag liegt. Wenn er tatsächlich der neue Speaker of the House wird, würde ich ihm sicherlich einen Vorschlag geben.
Es wurde viel über Eigentumssteuer diskutiert. Was sind eure Meinungen über Steuerung auf Auktionswert? Würden Sie für ein Gesetz, das die Wirtschaft in Wyoming Steuern ändert, zu Auktionswert versus Marktwert, antworten? Erklären Sie uns Ihre Antwort.
Okay. Ich fühle, dass unsere aktuelle Bewertungssystem gebrochen ist. Und meine ganze, meine ganze Gründe dahinter ist, weil ich wirklich fühle, wie unsere Steuern sind, wir bezahlen, Steuern steigen und sinken. Also haben wir eine Steuerung auf Auktionswert. Wenn man eine Menge Eigentums hat, wird man auf diese Wert bezahlt. Und dann würde es 1% oder 2% im Jahr durch Inflation增加. Es würde keine Steuer geben, wenn man remodelt, wenn man es hinzufügt. Denn man bezahlt Steuern, Sales-Tax auf alle Jahre, die man hineinbringt. Also gibt es keinen Nötigkeiten, Steuern zu erhöhen, nur weil man sie verbessert. Jetzt sind wir Menschen ausgelöst, die ihre Eigentum verbessern. Denn jedes Mal, wenn man eine Menge Eigentum macht, wer da? Der Steuerberater da, um zu sehen, wie viel wir in der Wohnung haben. Und ich bin nicht gegen das, etwas so zu sagen. Aber das ist nicht der Weg, den wir sollten. Steuer ist ein, oh, ich habe es verloren. Entschuldigung für das. Es ist, well, es ist einfach, Steuer ist es. Ich bin nicht überrascht, dass er das sagt. Es heißt legal order. Der Regierung schießt von uns aus, um es anderen zu geben. Und also ist es nicht angemessen. Also ist das, worauf ich bin auf Auktionswert. Allen, ich habe Allen erklären müssen. Wir haben es schon ein paar Tage lang gemacht. Das ist ein guter Job. Ich würde nicht unentschuldigt sein, was er gesagt hat. Aber eine Teilung sollte unsere County-Elektronischen Officielle beteiligen. Und können wir das tun? Damit unser County gesichert bleibt? Das ist eine Diskussion, die ich oft habe. Und ich glaube, es ist sehr relevant. Und einige von euch, die hier sind, in der Raum, würden einige der ersten sein, mit denen ich reden würde, wenn wir diese Diskussion haben. Weil ihr definitiv mehr dazu tun könnt als Kommissionär, als Treffer, als Landwirt oder Legislaturier.
as commissioners, as treasurers than I am as a rancher and legislator.
If asked to make cuts in spending, what aspects of the Wyoming budget should be visited first? And what spending should not even be considered for cuts?
That's a great question. And so just to think about our budget and how, what we spend. Of course, the elephant in the room is education. That's over half the budget, and that's constitutional. And then another 20% are... So it's the Department of Health, and that's federally mandated. And so when we make a cut, any cut, it's in the other 30%. And so when we make a budget cut, you're all going to feel it. And we are... I again would say the experts are not here. The experts are in this room. Wyoming has what Wyoming needs. And in our House District Two, we need to talk to those agencies and departments that were cut. And let's have the conversation. There are going to be conferences. But absolutely need to talk to you to represent you fairly.
Alan, thank you for that question, Alan.
Please, sir. If asked to make cuts in spending, what aspects of the Wyoming budget should be visited first? And what spending should not even be considered?
Okay. So one thing I think, the first statement I make on this is I think we need to ask ourselves, what is the role of government? I mean, that's where we need to be coming from for this. And so as we look at it, like JD said, education and health are the more major portions of our budget. The one is mandated by our state constitution. The second one is mandated by the federal government. I think we look at those areas very close. Because in my mind, at least for property taxes, if 75% of our dollar is going for education and our other quarter is going for our infrastructure and law enforcement, I think we have a role of government reversed from the way it used to be. And so to fix that, we're probably going to have to come up with a resolution to change our constitution if we need to to fix our education portion. And then we need to stand up as a state and say no to the federal government mandates. And so with that, the number of one cut would be education. But it would only come after a constitutional amendment that everybody in our state is voting on. And then the other one is going after the federal government telling us what, how to do our health stuff. And we have got to quit downing to the federal government to give those extra $100.
This is a long one. Thanks, guys. The Wyoming Republican Party Platform Plan Number 10 states, "The citizens of the U.S. are the ultimate authority. Governments possess powers derived only from the consent of the government." The Wyoming Constitution, Article One, Section One, states power is inherent in the people. All power is inherent in the people. They have at all times an unalienable right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they think proper. How does this jive with your view of what the job of a legislator entails?
Okay. Like I always said, that is a long question. I've been nice to be able to read and see with my own eyes. But I guess what I would say, how that jives with my view of a legislator is it comes with a title. It's representative. We are the legislature to represent each one of you. And so we have got to keep that in mind when we're legislating. Because you're the ones that put us there to make that decision for you. Goes back to our whole federal government, representative for company. We're not a democracy. And so we... So for me, yeah, you do a good job of remembering that our power in the legislature comes from you, the grassroots people. And so it's important that we use the word that you sent us there to you. And that is to protect you and protect your property and your rights so that you can use your property and your... You know, your private property in a way that will benefit you and the state member. It's all about you guys. And it's not about what we can do for ourselves when we're down there in Chinatown.
The Wyoming Republican Party Platform Plan Number 10 states, "The citizens of the U.S. are the ultimate authority. Governments possess powers derived only from the consent of the government." The Wyoming Constitution, Article One, Section One, states, "Power is inherent in the people. All power is inherent in the people. They have at all times an unalienable right to alter, reform, or abolish the government in such manner as they think proper." How does this jive with your view of what the job of a legislator entails?
Some of them disagree with what we deterred. I thought that was pretty spot on. We represent you. And there are a lot of voices out there that are very loud political voices that would like to come between Representative and you. And... Yes, there's one plan I'm willing here, but consider the Freedom Caucus. The... When you think of a group like that, and where they come from, and how that works, when you have a person on a national panel that reviews the bills of the day and sends out a recommendation to all Freedom Caucus members on how to vote, that disenfranchises you. I can't serve two masters in the legislature. Now, I disagree most of the time, a lot of the time, with such a group. Because we share a... Of the same views. We're conservative. We both have the desire to move the needle to the right. But I can't forget who I answer to, and that would be you.
Right. A little healthcare-related questions here. Is healthcare a fundamental right? Please explain why you feel it's a raven. Is it a fundamental right, healthcare?
I guess we can go anywhere we want. What did we say? You're not obligated to answer the question that was asked, but you're welcome to answer the question that should have been asked. I'll try to answer that question. No, it goes to healthcare. That's... Healthcare decisions. And we elaborate on any one of those particular sentences. But until I have further direction, I'll just leave it there.
I think this question comes back to our point is the role of government. Personally, in my opinion, the role of government is not to take care of healthcare for each of us. I mean, it's nice to have good healthcare, but it's not the government's job. The government is there to protect us and provide infrastructure for our state, for our cities, and our communities. But that is basically end law enforcement protection. But other than that, I don't feel that healthcare is actually a portion of the role of government.
Having said that, if a bill to expand Medicaid comes to the legislature, how would you vote and why?
Now, that one is an easy one for me this weekend. Faced with that several times already. I would vote no. The issue I have with Medicaid is it never pays the cost to the hospital. So if the hospital has a bill that they send to the Medicaid for $100, and that's the actual cost, and Medicaid only pays 70, 60, whatever the percentage is, the hospital is still on the hold. And if you do that a number of times, many of us in our business know that sooner or later, you run out of money when you're not getting paid what your expenses are. And so I would vote no on Medicaid. And I have had people talking about this. They say, but that's better than not being paid. Yeah, it's better than not being paid. But it's still going to lead you to a roll pretty quick. And so I'm still a no on Medicaid expansion. And another thing about that is a lot of this Medicaid expansion, everybody that eats it, mothers that are having babies are already on it. The elderly are already on it. The people that are extended here is already not working age yet. They don't need Medicaid. They didn't pay for their medical costs. So no on Medicaid expansion.
Well said. I have a very biased that myself. And I think Wyoming agrees on that for the most part. One way to kill any healthcare-related bill, whether it's Medicaid expansion or not, is to say this Medicaid expansion, and it's pretty much dead. And we do see that with some legislation. And for those of you who haven't had a conversation before, there's no guarantee that the federal government will continue to provide that payment two years, five, and there's 10 years down the road where, once you jump in that net, you can't get out. And the federal government is not obligated to hold out its original percentage. And so that's why I would no on Medicaid expansion.
This question is specifically for JD. Your door hanger states, "One of the planks you're running on is expanding school choice." Yet you voted against House Bill 0138, the Wyoming Home Scholarship Program. Please explain your vote.
Does anybody remember what the Home Scholarship? Is that... Is that true at all? Does anybody remember Home Scholarship? The Home Scholarship was to allow dollars to fall to each individual child. So were the education savings account or not?
It was the early onset of the ESA, the education savings account. It was brought by Representative Larson.
Understood. Sorry for my poor memory, and great question. So I would say this, at that... Wyoming is very cautious regarding charter schools and school choice. And I think that's wise. And I have been... I have needed to do research and keep learning. And at that point in time, which would have been two years ago, I'm assuming, I was not up to speed on what we're dealing with there. And I believe, like we just heard, it was very early stages of school choice. And I wasn't comfortable with support at that time. And even now, depending on the bill, I have to be very careful because of the challenge with school choice is how can we do that right? We have plenty of examples around the state's boundaries that have not gone right. How do we do that right to where other schools are complement to our public schools rather than competition? Our public schools are the center, the nucleus of most of our small towns. And we need to be very competitive.
This question is specifically for Representative Slameo. Would you explain why he would vote against House Bill 54, Wyoming Reads Day, especially in light of Wyoming statute that states for grades one through eight, reading, writing, and mathematics showing insights?
Thank you. The reason I voted against that is because I didn't feel that was necessary for the legislature to be voting on. I don't think that's part of the role of government. And so therefore, I didn't think it was necessary to support Wyoming Reads Day. I mean, the thing I've been hearing is we go down there, we have 500, 600 bills that we're looking at. That's ridiculous. We shouldn't be looking at 500, 600 regulars, but not 500, 600 new bills. And so I really think it's all those that... And I know you're being here to hear me say this, but what is the role of government? And right now, we have the role of government all out of whack. And we've got to bring the bad hand away and get it aligned to where the role of government is doing what we need to do for the people in the minimum amount. Because the less we're good as government, the less cost holders. And so that's what we do. We need to rein government back in.
Next question is for both candidates. Recently, the Western County Senior Center was asked to reconsider its policy to restrict firearms at our senior center. Do you think the carrying of firearms, open or concealed, should be restricted in government buildings?
Short answer? No. And it brings us on our second... And it brings us on our Second Amendment right. And the big issue is, any place we have a gun free zone, it's a soft target. And these shooters that shoot out voices, they're not stupid. They don't want to get shot at that. So they're going to choose a place where they know nobody has guns. That's why it's always a school where there isn't anybody carrying. And if there is law enforcement there, there's only one or two officers that they have to take care of. So yes, I voted for, it was House Bill 125 that was going to repeal many of the gun free zones in Wyoming this last session. Unfortunately, the governor vetoed. And we weren't able to get a special set... And we weren't able to get a special session to actually look at that bill along with several others that should have, should have been relooking at because there's a super majority of both houses that passed those. But there wasn't a super majority to call back into special session to vote on them. And I think it was just to cover a bunch of legislative debates because they voted for it, and it looked good on their record. So as talked about earlier, they were looking to preserve their seats. So the governor turned it on, vetoed those bills. And then they did vote to bring it back up before they could actually veto the governor's vote again. So no, I don't believe that we should amend our Second Amendment rights.
Recently, the Weston County Senior Center was asked to reconsider its policy to restrict firearms at the senior center. Do you think the carrying of firearms concealed or open should be restricted in government buildings?
So whether it is like, I said, it covered it well, and I'll just continue that. My thinking just a little bit. I would, I am impressed by your confidence in, in your fellow legislators', legislators' foresight in that they would vote yes to those gun control bills with the knowledge that the governor would veto it. I do not have that confidence in, in other legislators, first of all. And I feel like if Representative Diamond and House or Senate for majority, Theodore Hicks, had the call to adjourn, probably wouldn't have had to deal with the governor's veto. If we'd have, I guess "we" is not the right word. You guys have run around long enough to take care of business. But certainly agree with everything we heard about the Second Amendment, soft targets, and gun free zones.
J.D. In relation to that question, how would you vote to eliminate all gun free zones and why?
I think we all, that's what we do. I think we do agree on that. All gun free zones. There are, we have to do that right. You know, this year, the day that, the way that bill was written, the day it was signed, it went into effect. Sheriff Gordon had no time to get ready for that, nor did anybody else, any of his counterparts. Schools didn't have time to get ready for that. We have to use some sense. I think it's the right thing to do, but we need to do it right.
Yeah, I would vote again to repeal all gun free zones. It's, it's not guns that kill people. It's people that kill people. And I mean, we can use a knife. We can use a bat. We can use a tie or iron. There's any number of things. Use our fists. But it's, it's people that kill people. Guns is just one of the things that they use. And so I would vote to repeal all gun free zones. And I just think we need to, we need to be careful. The thing is, it's proven most concealed carrying people are the safest, most responsible people in this society. And so that's, that's what I would say. We definitely need to count from mine or the head of it. So, I mean, we all, all had rifles in our gun free zones when we were there. It's not a matter of the guns. It's a matter of people not being responsible that like that else.
In addition, that transition needs to be made wisely, like I spoke of before, because at this point in time in our history, there are those people that we deserve. And so there's going to have to be some training, and there's going to, we need to be some, we need to do it wisely, and we absolutely should do it, but with prudence.
Weston County recently opened the door to a fight for each county to have one senator and one representative. If a bill is presented to the legislature to follow our Wyoming Constitution's provision Article 3, Section 3, minus the fine print, would you vote yes? Why why not?
Minus the fine print? You're referring to the, this section is subject to the United States Constitution. Is that, is that how it goes?
Each county should have its own representative.
But what fine print were you referring to?
They're just asking minus the fine print, because there's always going to be some details. But do you feel that each should have its own?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so one man, one vote does the greatest service to rural counties. And we, we all understand that. We all see that. Al's running from here to Torrington. Three different counties, three different set, county, set county electeds. It's not a good, it's not a good fit or good service to rural Wyoming. With that being said, that's going to be a heavy lift in Chinatown. And you consider where we're at now with all the urban representatives. They have no incentive to give us our representative and senator map. And as a matter of fact, they, they don't care for that at all. And so I really have to go to, gonna have to go to the Supreme Court. I'd love to see it go to this one. And that's gonna take a big checkbook. How's yours, Al? Minus shop after this game.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely vote for go back to constitutional representation. And my, my biggest issue on this whole thing is we, as a nation, have been slowly, God, over the last, probably almost 50 years, that we're a democracy. We are not a democracy. We are a representative republic. And the advantage of representative republic is even our smallest communities have representation. And, and we need to push back on this, this federal ruling coming down, saying go, going back to the Voting Amendment, one man, one vote. You can do that in your counties, but it doesn't work in the US statewide because then we don't have the representation for our small, our small counties. And our founding fathers understood this principle when they, when they settled our country. I mean, that's why Wyoming has two senators, one representative. We still have representation that equal to all the rest of the states in the Senate. And we need to follow that same pattern here in Wyoming. I agree with J.D. It is going to be a heavy lift. It's going to be a deal we're going to have to work with those other representatives and senators in the House and the Senate down in Wyoming and help explain how they still will need the representation they need because it will be allocated out on a reasonable basis between, between the representatives based on population. Thank you.
I have a bunch of energy questions. Do you believe that Governor Gordon is trying to get the refinery shut down? And what should or would legislators do about it?
Well, I don't know if I would say you're right that he's trying to get the refinery shut down. But I do know that his pursuit of the carbon neutral is, is based on flawed science, in my opinion.
That's right.
I, I think because there's, the CO2 coalition has put out a lot of information on how harmful this sequestration of CO2 is. And just the fact that all of us have gone to school, we did this science experiments, putting plants in a container where we put more CO2 in. And yes, the ones that make higher CO2 do better. Why are we putting our CO2 in the ground when it's out there and will help our plants, our trees, our alfalfa, and the forests of our animal scene? I think this, this whole idea towards this regu-, well, you call it renewable energy, but I'm not sure it's really renewable because it's destroying all of our other elements in the time when we're implementing them. And I think we need to focus more on our coal, our oil, and the gas because that is really reliable and expensive energy that we can build our state on, build our country on, and continue to thrive as a nation. And so that's, that's where our focus needs to be. Not on this, getting rid of all our green, green hills or our reliable fossil fuels.
Do you believe that Governor Gordon is trying to get our refinery shut down? What should or would legislators do about it?
So I followed a couple weeks ago, probably a month ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Representative Diamond. But that statement was made by you in the meeting here in Newcastle. Was it, is that right?
If I may speak to that. My statement here in Newcastle was that if we continue to follow the policies of our governor, refineries like Newcastle will close.
Understood.
I'm telling the truth. I'll stand behind that.
He can't hear you.
I'm hoping this is over, but I have an opportunity to be able to speak to some of these issues. But yes, I would love to speak to some of these issues.
Thank you. And so I, so even though I'm out of the room, my phone went to ringing off the wall. And I'm glad now to talk about the carbon conversation because before Joe Biden got in the middle of that, carbon was just a commodity in Wyoming. Wyoming has led the carbon industry for 40 years. Southwest Wyoming, Salt Grand Field at their gas station. We pump carbon out here, and the Bakken fields buy in as fast as we can give it to them for enhanced oil recovery. Our, we should not have any pressure from the federal administration, Indian administration, state or federal, we are the carbon. But we're getting a lot of pressure from the other regions, from the consumer. 11 out of the 13 states that we sell coal to are asking what we're doing to reduce our carbon output. And so that's our consumer. That's who we're selling our product to. And they deserve to, they, they have a place at our table. They're writing us our check. They're paying our bills. And so, no, he's not trying to close the refinery down.
This question is specifically for J.D. With the governor who states Wyoming should be carbon native and your support of his green deal, how do these ideas support the Wyoming way?
Very relative.
My support of his green deal?
It's what they said.
Okay. So whatever that meant, conservatives, me in particular, are often afraid of new technology. And so we have been known to behave irrationally and to resist new technology. I understand, I understand that there is technology that is making it easier to remove carbon from wherever we're in the car. And like, like my far, answer to the far question, if that's affordable, if that's doable, if we can paint Wyoming coal green, if we can paint Wyoming oil green, if we can paint our natural gas green for our consumers' sake, just like e-carbon offset in a grocery store or in a technology company or with an oil company, as long as the government is not involved, as long as a free market, I'm willing to have that conversation.
What's your view of the green deal?
My view of the green deal is money in people's pockets who are promoting it. I don't, I, I really feel, I would disagree with the statement from conservatives. We tend to shut away from new technology. I embrace new technology. I don't embrace technology that requires government subsidies to be viable. And that's what we're seeing all across the country. And unfortunately, Wyoming is helping promote that by not taxing our wind energy production to first rate as the production. And if they upgrade their equipment during that time of regular headers, that tax credit continues on, and they still aren't paying tax. That is unfair to the people in our state who are mining on coal, drilling for oil, and producing gas. Because they're all paying tax.
Yes.
And so we're not only supporting energy sources that are not viable without, whatever you know, but we're hurting our legacy industries that are contributing to our, our role within our state and our nation.
That's right. This question is directed to both Allen and J.D. How do you think Wyoming is going to keep the energy industry thriving in the future with more pressure coming from Democrats?
Okay, so how is Wyoming going to keep the energy sector thriving? This comes into the state standing up against the federal government. And I know this might be off the wall, but I think we need to tell the federal government to go beyond sand. Most of this land and most of this metal in the state are claimed by the federal government. And it is our land and it's our minerals. I think, we were talking about energy earlier. J.D. said all these states are complaining about how much green energy we are sending to them. I say, we build new power plants. And if they want energy, we'll send them coal-fired energy. And if they don't want energy, we don't need the cinnamon energy. They don't have that energy from wind, metals, or solar, fountains, or state if it's being fed or reserved. And sooner or later, they'll say, maybe we could use some of your coal-fired energy.
That's right.
And we're a sister number than this sounds, and I'm making this sound because we have to deal with the EPA. with the EPA and the DEQ has to be just as tough as the EPA is. I disagree with that. That's where I think we as a state need to stand up and say, we don't care what your regulations are. I'm not saying we need to be putting out plumes into the air with our coal-fired airplanes. We can use the fed as we have now. We have clean power and we aren't polluting down the state. And we need to just continue to use the power of our nation and not bow to these people who think we're green energy.
How do you think Wyoming is going to keep the energy industry thriving in the future with more pressure from Democrats?
So we are, we're doing that every day and it's not getting easier, just like that question suggests. And that's why I like to say every policy or legislative craft has to have our core initiatives in mind. And property tax, we can have that conversation. Do we backfill? Whatever property tax we cut, how do we backfill that? Who's going to make that bill? We know who's going to make that bill. The guys who directly, indirectly make two-thirds of our bill already, and that's our mineral industries. And every policy that we craft, even if it's us financially or it goes high in the cost of government for us, is going to put more pressure on them. And so that's our conversation, we need to keep that in mind anytime we are doing some brilliant pontificating down in Cheyenne.
Alan, this question is specifically for you. You voted for House Bill 69, buying permit and reclamation plan changes, landowner approval. What was the reason for your vote?
The reason for my vote on that bill, that bill came from a legislator down in the southern part of the state. There's a gravel pit down there that was continually changing its reclamation plans and its permitting process, and the service landowner was not being notified of this. That bill was a private property rights bill, specifically dealing with service ownership. And all of us that have property, specifically ranches, know how difficult it is when you don't own the memory rights below that and are happy to negotiate service use agreements. So this bill, all they did was say that the service landowner had the consent in the right before they could change the reclamation plan or change the permit on their process. So that bill was strictly a private property rights bill, and that's why I voted for it.
JD, would you explain how you would have voted for House Bill 69 alive?
Thank you. So strictly a private property rights bill is not accurate in my view. I am endorsed by the Wyoming Mining Association, by the Wyoming Contractors Association, by the Wyoming Controlling Association, formed the first two, came out of strong opposition to that bill because it would have updated the last hundred years of rules that we have operated under in the state of Wyoming. And our mining industry, back for a former question, our mining industry cannot stand any more pressure than it's under right now. That bill excluded coal and char, and so it takes in gravel, bin night, uranium, and others. Like we heard, I am familiar with the process with the DEQ and the current rules we have in the state of Wyoming on how to deal with a mineral operator on your property that behaves as we heard. I've done it, it's doable, and it works well, the process we have now. I believe that bill was a solution looking for a problem.
For both candidates. On April 9th, 2024, Secretary of State Jeff Gray is sending a letter to Governor Non-Porton urging him to sign the Secretary of State's amendments to Jeff and to his election procedures to require acceptable identification for proof of identity, including the proof of Wyoming residency when registered to vote in Wyoming. Governor Gordon, along with legislative leadership, advised from both chambers vetoed this rule change, saying the Secretary Gray was exceeding his statutory authority. Which side of this argument are you on and why?
So Secretary Chalk and I, we go back in ways, and he's great at doing that. And I think he's right, I think he's on target, that's exactly what he's done, but he's not the guy to do it because I think that has to come through the legislature. And it's worth a try, John.
I would disagree with that statement. I feel that it was trying to be brought through the legislature, the votes weren't there to get it, and because of that, the Secretary of State sees what was happening in our southern border, knew that we needed to begin something in process. Because right now, it doesn't matter who you are, if you've got a driver's license, which many of these illegals are getting given, they can come to Wyoming and say, I have residence here, and they would be allowed to vote because you cannot stop them. And that is wrong. And so I think the governor and the leadership of both houses that said that he should veto that were wrong. And we really, I mean, we require one year of residency, they get an ante license, they're going to say. It should be one year for, to be able to vote.
That's right.
I mean, you're not disenfranchising somebody that lives because they're a big group here. They can vote absentee from their home state. But we need to have a residency requirement in this state, and thirty days is definitely mine.
We're going to do a lightning round, we're a round time, there's still a lot of great questions, a lot of guys are not able to answer all of the questions, but these are going to be yes or no. To be gone. Do you guys want to stand up? And we're looking to use the mic, if you guys just want to stand up so everybody in the room can see all this fireproof of questions when you're a yes or no and personally didn't have, we're good with that. Okay. Do you support an Article V Convention of States?
Yes.
No.
Do you support school choice, including permitting homeschool and private school students to participate in extracurricular activities in public schools?
Yes.
Two yeses. Do you support state education funding and/or tax credits that follow the child?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you support prohibiting critical race theory or diversity equity and inclusion-based materials used in publicly funded educational settings, along with prohibiting common or standards or any derivatives such as next generation standards, et cetera?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not totally sure on the terminology there at the end, but yes.
Do you support the Tenth Amendment to restrict power powers to those granted specifically in the U.S. Constitution?
Yes.
Do you support eliminating, oh, excuse me, do you support the Tenth Amendment to restrict power powers to those granted specifically in the U.S. Constitution? Do you support eliminating business personal property tax on equipment, machinery, vehicles, and inventory?
Yes.
Do you support eliminating business personal property tax on equipment, machinery, vehicles, and inventory?
Like all tax conversations, that probably needs a little closer volume.
Answer, no answer. Yes or no? Yes or no?
Do you support strengthening and enforcing laws to eliminate illegal immigration?
To eliminate illegal?
Do you support strengthening and enforcing laws to eliminate illegal immigration?
Yes.
Red flag laws, also known as extreme risk protection order laws, allow a force to temporarily seize firearms from anyone believed to be in danger to themselves or others. Though Wyoming is not a state that has red flag laws, do you support or oppose, do you support red flag laws?
No.
No.
Do you support allowing teachers who volunteer to go through training and certification to be armed in our public schools?
Just the first few words, yeah?
Do you support allowing teachers?
Yes.
To be armed in our public schools?
Yes.
Do you oppose abortion and the use of public funds for abortion in any form?
Yes.
Yes.
Prior to tonight, did you complete and return the candidate questionnaire sent to you by Wyoming Republicans Alive?
No.
Yes.
What was your score?
Hundred percent A.
Prior to tonight, did you complete and return the candidate platform questionnaire sent to you by the Western County Republican Party?
No.
No.
Carrie, let's go ahead and do our closing statements. I believe Alan got first on the opening, so we're going to start with JD on closing statements.
Effective leaders understand that manners matter. To be effective on the floor of the House of Representatives, I must maintain a level of respect of my colleagues throughout the legislative process. A passionate and intelligent legislator can quickly be rendered ill-relevant by the lack of civility. My life experience has proven that there's no better road than the high road. An effective representative is at liberty to call upon other representatives for counsel, support, reference for their opinion anytime. This is only possible if I have maintained a level of respect with the rest of the body. One cannot persuade the defendant. I retract the wall-winded pontificating and the headline-seeking posture, neither of which led to effective legislation.
Finally, I just want to thank all of you again for coming tonight. What I would say is I would never ask for your vote. I feel that there's been a lot of talk about civility down in the House. And I guess what I've come to learn that and see is if you vote the different way, a lot of people consider that uncivil. I don't see so much unsylabus in the debate, it's more if you just vote the wrong way, you're considered uncivil. And I think it's one of those deals, we have begun in this country how to agree to disagree. And now if you disagree, you're unagreeable or uncivil. So anyway, thank you for coming, all of you.
I will leave around for as long as, do you have questions for me?
Thank you, JD, ladies. Representative Alan, it's my whole appreciation, you guys have been a wonderful panel. For both candidates, we'll leave here, one minute, I know Chip's already made clear who he's going to hang around too. I do want the guys to know Carrie has something to say really quick before we all leave the room, but we also have a commissioner forum coming up at the Senior Center on August 7th. August 7th, Commissioner Forum, please join us for that at the Senior Center.
I just had a couple of House cleanup issues, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say thank you. Can we have a big round of applause for our moderator, Holly? Can we also have a big round of applause for the thankless job of the question committee? They got cleanup. They did a great job, and I'm sorry we weren't able to get to everyone's questions, but I'm so impressed with them because they got all the candidates up here to talk about Jai. Again, thank you to all of you for coming tonight, and if you would like to see a recap of this, the Newsletter Journal does post, and it should be up in a couple of days. Walter does a great job. So there was also another forum that went down and lost if you wanted to hear more from the candidates, but thank you all for coming tonight.